Special council meeting for October 3rd. To order, Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard.
Here.
Nine present.
I think we need to send her to Tahoe.
All right. Do we have any public speakers? Nope. So we'll go to our first action item. And our first action item, if you recall, was last time we had a council meeting on this topic, the motion was for me and Councilmember Klein to get together and talk about this. So we have, and Councilmember Klein will go over his motion, why he did it, and then I will second it, and then we can have discussions and talk about it. So Councilmember Klein.
Can you guys just vote on it and we can all leave?
And we'll have our pizza. Well, I feel like this is one of those TV series, and I'm going to have to go back and recapitulate what happened in the earlier episodes, yeah. Episode one, year one, we had a motion by the authors of the colleagues' memo, and then we had a substitute motion, and then we had lots of parliamentary procedure back and forth, and what we ultimately did was to continue with two members that turned out to be myself and the mayor, to come back with something that incorporated both of the motions, recognizing that the motion to, the substitute motion seemed to have five votes. And that's what we did in this, and also used the opportunity to really sharp, I hope you agree, is sharpening the language and making it rather explicit as to what the staff is supposed to do and in what timeframe. So that's what is drafted up, and that's what's reflected here. There was a clear attempt to include the sense of what, including some of the language from the original colleagues' memo, along with the ideas that were expressed in the substitute motion as to specifics, as to time.
You're hard to hear.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Always been the case.
Bring it up then.
Perhaps the one addition is to make, I think we mentioned it, but I wanted to make explicit in this, that we also wanted our city attorney's opinion as to legality of what we might be doing or how things ought to proceed from a legal standpoint, since there doesn't seem to be, at least right now, any clear models as to somebody else having done something along the same lines. So what is before you is the result of all that. I hope it's clear, but if it's not, then we'll make it clearer. So I will so move the motion that is attached to this agenda item. And I'll second it. Do you want to speak further? No. I would just like to say that I'm glad we managed to work, work on this collaboratively, and, you know, I think that council members obviously should look at this and sharpen the language, and, you know, feel free to, you know, add or subtract, or, you know, that kind of stuff, and that we should, you know, do this. I also think that we should talk a little bit about TDM in general, and say that I think that this is a really important step that Palo Alto needs to take. You know, we're facing such big traffic and parking issues at the moment, and clearly building new garages and an RFP is not alone going to solve these problems. And this is a way forward that we really need to explore in a serious way, otherwise there really is no way forward to resolve these traffic and parking issues. And obviously, if you can get people out of their cars, for every parking spot you don't need, that's a lot of money that you save. I mean, $66,000 a space. So I think we really do have to make a real yeoman's effort here to do what we can to solve this problem, and I think this is the way you do it. So with that. If I may, Mr. Mayor. Sure. We've included item three down towards the bottom of the page. It says, "Advised the council on other possible solutions to the city's traffic and parking problems." And that's intended as an invitation to the staff to come up with other ideas which may be out there. And one that I have heard mentioned, and I've passed that on to the city manager as to whether it would have any merit at all, is the idea that create a large parking lot somewhere on city property east of 101, and run a much more robust shuttle system to downtown. And the manager said that they can, we'll at least see if that has any chances of being feasible. And there may be lots of other ideas out there, and so I don't think we want to discourage anybody from coming forward with something that might really work for us. And I would agree with that. Councilmember Niss?
So let me take this in a really different direction for a minute, because I, in the meantime, I called around to some of my friends around the country and asked them if they had one of these. Frequently, people say, "Well, we are not really sure what you mean by a TDM, but let us tell you what we have." So I thought maybe we could start with the city manager tonight, who has had experience with this, and talk about whether or not we're all on the same page when we talk about a TDM. What is a TDM, and what do we think it might look like in Palo Alto? And other TDMs, we've all agreed, exist in some way or another, such as at Stanford. I guess Google must have a TDM with those wonderful buses that run back and forth and so forth, but the real question is, if a city is looking at a TDM, how are we differentiating that from other kinds of TDMs that might exist in other, other areas versus Palo Alto?
So, thank you, Councilmember Niss. Mr. Rodriguez is out today, and he could probably get into a lot more detail than I'm capable of doing, but your question actually made me look more closely at the colleagues' memo that Councilmember Klein and the mayor put together. This one also still focuses on TDM districts, which was, I think, in response also to the TDM, for the most part, a lot of the, the original memo, but there obviously are lots of, and the whole idea here is, how is it that we, we can reduce car trips, for the most part, and have alternative means of transportation or fewer car trips? Maybe three here that talks about other solutions could include TDM programs or TDM requirements that's, that are different than the idea of just setting up a district itself. So I, I think that would be actually clarifying, because I think what we want, you know, if there are best practices in transportation demand management that are, that are programs, and if we find other jurisdictional examples about requirements that they might have in lane use cases, they very well may not be part of a TDM district itself, just maybe a standard. And it does seem to me that the intent here is to advance TDM, of which a district model would be one component. So I hadn't thought about that until your question, because it, you know, I think we can speak better on TDM and not as eloquently on the districts, and I actually think the council members who went over to Contra Costa County, and Aaron, who wasn't here, actually sort of, at least took a sort of in-depth look at a TDM district. And obviously, part of our work would be able to do more detailed analysis on that model, for example, and its, and its applicability here to the city. But just as an example, it may be that we could generate policies that could require, as part of the public benefits process on a PC, actual cash contributions to fund, let's just say, a shuttle system, for example, without it being part of a district, but that could be a, sort of a, a transportation demand management solution to something. So I just want to be clear that we're not, does the council want us to just focus in this time on analyzing districts or TDM in general, which would include districts? So I'm not completely answering your question, but I've raised another one.
I think when we first talked about this, we were looking at districts, because, again, the vice mayor is the one who really motivated us to go and go across the bay and look at what, what was going on there. But, but it seems to me as though we probably have some components already. When we have something like Caltrain, when we have VTA right, you know, in our midst as well, when we have, you know, the juxtaposition with Samtrans at the same time, that there probably is the beginning of that. And, and I'm glad to see that Councilmember Klein and, and the mayor included that number three regarding traffic and parking problems in general, because there is a general consensus at the moment anyhow that parking is a major issue. And I would think that rather than waiting, you know, to go through the TDM and is, shall we do a district and so forth, is, which is what initially had been defined, that this is a great chance to just look at that aspect of it too, which is other, other, you know, quicker methods that we could use to get at the, at the traffic and the parking problems, that might play into a TDM district later, so that maybe we can start, you know, thinking, we might actually think small and grow, and have that become part of a district as a long-term plan.
Yes. Well, I, if I just might say, just one other thing in that regard, I think the, the advantage of a district concept of, is a way of trying to both on the policy regulation side to encompass a lot of different properties rather than, and landowners rather than an individual. So obviously, if we're just dealing with, say, a PC or some other kind of review on a project, you're just looking at one project and how to reduce the traffic impacts. A district seems to offer a more systems-based framework for establishing policies, and then, as I understand it from, I haven't met with the Contra Costa TMA director, but it also establishes a kind of management framework to be doing all of this kind of marshaling and shepherding of behavior, and also being able to channel folks within the district into available TDM programs, which seems to be an important factor in, say, the Contra Costa model, and there may be others out there that we'll go out and research and find.
That model, I think I'm correct, Nancy, is definitely a district model, not a jurisdictional model.
Yeah, and she gave Aaron the steps for how that got boundaried and developed, and some people outside the district actually pay into it in order to capture some of the value, in order to get their employees in.
Could I just say one other thing about this? I think the, the directive to the city attorney, you know, which I think could have been inferred in the original memo also, is really important, because as we know, we're going to identify some different models that are around the country, some of which may be precluded in California under California law that might be possible, for example, in Florida. Or there may be things that we could cobble together based on Molly's research, taking different components from some other place that actually could be applicable in California and might not be able to be done in some other places, so.
And when the time comes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, thank you to the mayor and Councilman Klein for putting this together. And I want to second the mayor's point that he made about, you know, a TDM program really being a, a part of a comprehensive solution to parking. And so along those, and I'm going to be supporting the motion as well, but along the lines of it being a comprehensive solution, I wanted to mention to staff as part of this bullet point three, the idea of using technology in our parking lots. And it's something that I've brought up before, but I haven't seen much, you know, come back in terms of ideas and how we might implement some of that. I know, you know, that I've mentioned this and I'll mention it again, but Santa Monica, their big parking garages, you know, have electronic signs outside showing how many parking spots are available. There are a ton of new apps and companies, you know, popping up that are producing apps where if I'm driving into Palo Alto and I'm coming down University from 101 and with a friend, because I'd never be on my phone while driving, of course. You know, there are apps that show where parking spaces are available, so maybe I get off University quicker to get to where those parking spaces are available, therefore creating less traffic, you know, and all these different ideas. So it looks like you've got some thoughts on it, so I'd love to hear them.
Yes, Amy French, planning official. I know that Jaime Rodriguez, who unfortunately couldn't be here, is keen on all of the high-tech solutions that are out there, and we've recently hired a parking manager who will begin later this month, and so I know we've, you know, we're going to have the resources, the bandwidth, to really hit hard and get going on this stuff.
Great.
Yeah, so you should see some things soon.
Awesome. Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the work on this. I have a couple of comments and clarification questions, because while I feel this moves us forward, what's, in some ways, I guess what's unclear to me, and maybe the writers of the motion can respond. The original colleagues' memo talked about a TDM plan, and then there were various elements of the TDM plan. The district as an operational concept was certainly part of that, but we very deliberately talked about plan, because a TDM plan, as you all know, has a lot of different elements, including the phrase that you're referring to is parking management strategies. That really is the core of point number three, because parking management strategies can happen in parallel with other TDM programs or policies, and what you're referring to, Councilmember Berman and others, is precisely, you know, the kinds of things that are being done in many cities, including San Jose and others, which can be readily looked at. My question is, I have two questions. One, the issue of the $100,000 here, as outlined in the colleagues' memo, is that to support staff doing research? That's my takeaway. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's also, with all of this, I think the concept is that staff is to be doing some preliminary, high-level research on these issues that we are describing, and we're placing both a time and a dollar amount on that to, to give the staff an idea of what we want and what we don't want. And that is, this is not to be a program that's to go over several years and be a, one that requires the planning department to drop everything else and do nothing but this. So the $100,000 is more of a metaphor rather than a precise dollar amount, but you combine that with the idea that the staff is supposed to come back here by whatever date we set there. February, January 20th, that, that we really mean that we want this to be done fast, not dirty, but not comprehensively, because that's the next step to be comprehensive.
And you don't mind if I keep asking questions about this, do you? The issue is, then, though, $100,000 or equivalent in concept, whatever, staff research, okay. At what point in this process do you imagine or not that some of the details outlined in the earlier colleagues' memo related to an RFP would be appropriate?
I think that's one of the things that they should be coming back with, as to what would be in the RFP.
Okay, because that's my, one of my core questions here is, if I were a staff member reading this, and I'm not, I would say, okay, of the various products, is there a reference here to a more detailed RFP? Because my, my core question here is, how can we most efficiently get the information that's needed for us to move forward? And I believe the staff is, is very knowledgeable about a lot of items, but they are not TDM specialists, you know, they've not created a bunch of policies, are not clear on the operational aspects and all of that. So I just, I'm going to think about how I'm going to make a suggestion in a couple minutes about, to make sure that that's the next step. The other, the other issue is...
May I respond to that?
Oh, sure. Well, no. Yeah, sure.
Though, though the words request for proposal are not included here, I think that's what's intended. If you read paragraph D, under city manager, advising the council whether the services of a consultant would be needed for a more detailed in-depth study of such proposed districts, and if so, what the consultant would be expected to do, and his or her expected cost. All of those things are really essential to an RFP. But the first step is, the staff might disagree with you, and they might come back, I'm not thinking they will, but they might come back and say, "We think we do have the resources within the staff." I don't, I don't think that's a question that we ought to decide upfront until we hear what the staff has to say about it. But assuming that you're correct and that the, the services of a consultant would be needed, then the staff was, is saying, would be required in their report to tell us what they think the consultant ought to be doing, and setting forth the other parameters which would go into an RFP.
Right, because I mean, the, the issue, yeah, I agree. I think the issue here is, even the issue of the legal review, unless there's a better understanding of what we're asking them, asking our city attorney to review, I mean, again, TDMs, programs, and policies that exist in other places have had some of this legal vetting, et cetera, et cetera. We all know this, and this is kind of basic research. I just am, you know, concerned that, you know, we're not giving the wrong message and spending precious staff resources in a way that we're not getting as much information as we might if we didn't kind of frame this a little bit differently. I see, I see your intention, as I look at this language again, I see, I see where you're going on that, so that, that's very helpful. So the, I appreciate also that there's a schedule here, because there's a tendency here sometimes to have it a little too open-ended, you know, we want something a little bit more constrained, so we have, you know, a product that, that's worthwhile. So just a point of information, in the original colleagues' memo, there was an attachment which had about 10 or 12 references and resources, which I think will be extremely helpful, and covering, you know, policies, operations, you know, TDM elements and all of that, and good examples in what some of the strengths and weaknesses of some of those have been. So I did want to make that observation. Okay, so with the understanding then, that, I'm trying to think about, if the staff feels that this gives enough direction, so that the issue of coming back with something better defined, that covers, gives us the flexibility and the nimble ability to create a comprehensive TDM program and policy that might include districts, I just, what I wanted to get a response, to kind of get a sense of that as you read this and hear our discussion.
Thank you. That's Sherri Lund calling me. Anyway, maybe I should have...
She's stuck in traffic.
I should have probably taken the call.
Yeah, she, she should have, she should have carpooled today. She should have carpooled.
So here's, here's the way I look at the two reports. The original colleagues' memo obviously is much more comprehensive in its objectives and specified, I think, what would be a lot of the directions and the analyses we would have to do. And, you know, it's probably both different levels of familiarity with the range of TDM programs and everything on council, and just trying to get clarity. So I, I'm reading the second one as just a, trying to stage the conversation and the analysis in some way, so we, we begin to look at this and we're going to come back with more information. And I do think particularly with three in here, I actually think that is large enough for us to go beyond just the district issue if we're doing our analysis, and bring in other TDM programs or policies for consideration. And I think with the qualification, which would be natural for us, that these are, these are sort of high-level, or let's almost sort of say, resulting in an executive level report about the options in TDM and what's working and what isn't working out there, what's legal and what isn't, what, all of that, then, then I think we would have a fruitful discussion. Now, when, when we come back, you know, I don't, clearly, this isn't then an up or down, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I think it's going to be then more, let's go in this direction more, and we may have more, much more direction, and may, we may come back and say, wow, here are streams of strategy that we could do to advance TDM programs, and with the whole goal of actually traffic reduction, and we're going to say, wow, it's going to take a lot of consultant assistance, and this roughly was what we're going to need, and here are the timeframes, and, you know, there may be a market basket of ideas that you want to choose from and look at, you know, or we may have some very specific tailored recommendations. That's the way I look at it. So I don't, I personally don't see any incongruity between the, the memo today and the prior one. I just think this one is obviously more kind of, it's narrower, and it just sets up a timeframe for us to come back with more information that will inform the next steps. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate the references to having a study session. We had generally talked about that before, and the examples of Stanford and the Contra Costa, clearly two of many options, I mean, transportation management associations at corporate campuses, I mean, there's a whole range that could be contributors to this that would help inform us, so, thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
I guess TDM programs are not entirely new to the city. I was looking through the citywide land use and transportation study from 1988, and one of its three goals was to institute a transportation demand management program for the city of Palo Alto, and set as an objective to get 35% of commuters into some alternative to driving alone by the year 2000.
How did we do?
Key question, how did we do? And I think that brings up a point I'd like to make here, is one of the problems with TDM programs are how do you measure it? How do you monitor it? How do you enforce it? So I would like to make a friendly amendment, and add on at the end of B, after, and its timeline, the words "including the monitoring and enforcing of any TDM program."
I'll accept that. Yep, fine with me.
Good, yeah, I think that's an important element. One other change I'd like to suggest is, earlier this year, we voted on a vision statement for the comp plan, one of the few things we have done as a council for the comp plan. And it used the term that the overall vision is to create a vibrant, attractive transit-rich area with mixed-use city and neighborhood centers that serve the community and beyond. Now, it had the term "mixed-use" in there, referring to both the downtown and California Avenue and other neighborhood centers. Now, the examples given in this memo of TDM programs are Stanford and Contra Costa Transportation Center. Nine... Center, neither of which are mixed-use areas. And so, how a TDM program fits into an area we're trying to build a mixed-use in is an interesting question and slightly different. So, I'd like to add, again, at the end of B, a statement said that would say, "And any special characteristics that may be relevant for a mixed-use district."
I'm not going to accept that.
Okay. Anyone else would like to second the discussion of that?
Would you like to speak to your amendment, Greg?
Yes, I think when we talk about districts, the downtown California Avenue, and we talk about trying to make them vibrant, attractive, mixed-use districts. The Com Plan defines mixed-use as a use that includes commerce, retail, and residence. So, defining a TDM program for a district has to obviously engage with the varied uses and patterns of transportation uses that takes place in those districts. And I think it is different from the Stanford campus, Stanford Business Park, and the Contra Costa BART Center. So, just to make sure that we take in that nuance that we are trying to create in our city, I think it would be appropriate to include the special characteristics that a mixed-use area might have.
Councilmember Holman, you want to speak to your second?
Just briefly. I think it does help clarify that not all of Palo Alto is created equally and that they're, especially since the references to Stanford and Contra Costa County are here, I think it is relevant to clarify that we're also talking about mixed-use districts and how the TDM programs might be different in those areas.
So, we're speaking to the amendment. So, I cleared the lights from the main motion, so if you want to put on your light for the amendment, go ahead. Councilmember Klein?
Well, if we move forward, I think that that would be an appropriate distinction to consider at level two or level three. But this is designed, this motion is designed to stay at a high level where we're considering lots of different possibilities and will gradually work down to a more detailed position. I worry that including language like this has the disadvantage of implying that we're not studying other forms of districts. Why single out mixed-use, particularly when we start off by saying that one of the possibilities here is a citywide district? And we haven't even defined what we mean by University Avenue, California Avenue, et cetera. There's deliberately no geographical boundaries suggested. So, you might very well have a, either you might have a citywide district, you might have just a business district, the University Avenue, Litton to Hamilton, et cetera, or you might have a wider University Avenue that includes part of the district, that includes parts of the residential sections of downtown north and downtown south, et cetera. So, I think that once you start getting into this level of detail, you have a real question as to where do you stop? And I don't think this is the place for us to get into that type of detail because I think it really fuzzes up our assignment at this level.
Vice Mayor Shepard?
Oh, you stole the words out of my mouth. I think that although, of course, we will get into this as we get more clarity as to how we will be able to transition, or if we even get to transition, into this type of thinking about transit management. To tie this to mixed-use districts means that we're actually looking at zoning and zoning codes possibly to try to translate them into something that we're not prepared to do yet. So, I think I would just ask if you would hold on to that idea as we get further along and get a little more knowledgeable about what this bundle of work is going to actually develop into.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I share the concern about getting too specific in this, and I very much like the direction that this motion had. But I don't think that including this particular amendment makes it too specific, as long as it's not prescriptive in saying only mixed-use districts, which I don't read it as being that way. There are special characteristics. It's just, in my mind, just additionally framing things. So, I'm okay with that. And then, I do have comments and otherwise on the main motion that I'd still-
So, why don't we come back to those? I'll call-
Yeah, as long as you call an order.
I will. Councilmember Price?
I would like to propose, if the timing is all right, a friendly amendment to point number three in the original motion, or should we wait until we vote on this-
No, we should wait for that.
And do that later? That's what you just said? So, we come back after we finish this?
We will come back, and I will call back on you and Councilmember Price and Councilmember Burt. All right, are we ready to vote on the amendment? And, one, two, three, four. And that fails on a five-to-four motion with councilmembers Burt, Niss, Schmidt, Holman voting yes. Voting yes. So, now, back to the main motion. Councilmember Burt?
Yes. First, I was glad to hear colleagues in the City Manager talk about that a lot of what we may be considering goes beyond this district concept, and they may be citywide programs. I think there's a good likelihood that some or all of what we do may be in that form. And I also want to say that I think the city attorney's analysis is actually going to be quite important. What's happened over the years in TDM programs, they've been very constrained by shifting legal limitations on this, and that's going to be a big part of what we're able to do. We're not able to do everything we'd like to do. And so, I think early on, having the city attorney give us some foundation on the framing of this, my understanding is that, for instance, the Contra Costa District couldn't do today everything that they did previously. So, these things shift. So, I think that the concept of including programs is right. I would like to suggest that we actually include that language kind of throughout the motion where it says, there are, I think, seven locations where it says transportation demand management districts. I would move that we add and/or programs, and it just kind of causes the motion to read the way we've said we meant. So, I'd like to offer that to the maker in the second.
I'll accept it. I'll accept it as well.
Okay, great. And then, I'll just add as a comment, and under the theme of not offering things too specific in the motion, but others have commented on elements that they think may be important, I'd say perhaps the elephant in the room is for almost any of these measures to be able to be implemented, we have to be able to have a handle on how many employees are residing at a given place of work, and then somehow tying that in to the programs that we have. And so, we're going to need to do that. We have, under our parking programs, we have parking requirements that are tied to the anticipated number of employees for a given use. And we have no way today of knowing whether that's being followed. We certainly have perceptions in the community that we have widespread greater densification than the zoning anticipates, although it's been forgotten that we had our Economic Development Manager survey two of our largest downtown employers, and surprisingly, both of them were actually at a lower density of employees per thousand square feet than our zoning. That does not mean that there aren't other employers who are well above that intensity. And when we look at what's a fair program, in essence, I think that we all have a certain concept that there's a certain amount that's grandfathered in the community. We have a certain employees that were here traditionally. We have a certain square footage that was here, and we had a parking and street system that did a moderately adequate job of accommodating those things historically, although we've always had problems. I mean, it's not like this is a new issue. Councilmember Schmidt mentioned that this was in the 1988 land use plan. You go back to the '30s and talk about parking and traffic in downtown Palo Alto is issues. However, we're talking about this today because we know that the problems have, in the last few years, gotten much worse on parking and traffic, and at least in certain areas of the city. And I don't see how we're going to be able to address these things unless we link it to the number of employees. Now, how we might do that, that's part of what we'll have a much deeper discussion about. But I think we're going to need to grapple with that, and I think the sooner that we all recognize that that's going to be part of the big issue and a major part, the better. So, and I'll be supporting the motion.
Vice Mayor Shepard?
Well, thank you, and thank you to the mayor and to Councilmember Klein for working this through. I think that it's, you know, a big interest of all of us to make sure that we can try to make Palo Alto circulate better. And I think that one of the biggest impressions that I've had for the last couple of years is trying to get service workers in who really have to be careful with how they spend their disposable dollars in their commutes and their ability to be able to park and get to their jobs downtown, because we do have jobs downtown that I'm pretty sure are minimum wage or not much more than that. And so, trying to work with everybody in a way that is a little more succinct is important to me. And I think that the other impression that I've been forced to realize is the fact that America just works differently now. They don't work in a cubicle anymore. They are able to pack more in. Councilmember Burt talked about how some of them are not as full as they might appear, but we do know that people are working differently. And so, that is changing a lot of the traffic patterns that we have and commute patterns. And so, and then, the last thing that's really made a huge impression on me, and I'm not exactly sure how this is going to ever play out, is our intermodal station, which seems to have every different type of transit in the Bay Area coming to it, including AC Transit, which is East Bay. I took the ACE train for the first time last week, and there's the Orange Shuttle that starts from there and goes down to the ACE train in Great America Parkway in order to catch the ACE train to get over to Stockton and, you know, communities in between that. So, there's even more than I even thought there were. I think that we don't have a great sequencing. I think MTC does not do a good job of trying to make public transit friendly or easy to get on. And so, I'm pretty sure that as we start to realize and start to learn what is the impairment between getting people out of their cars and onto public transit, we might be asking some big questions to our own services to see how we can get a better experience for our commuters in for jobs. So, my only interest in this, the only concern I'm having is this not cost of not more than $100,000 in staff time. I just wanted to ask, Jim, for me, this goes two ways. Either you will blow it off and not pay attention to it because you need to get the work done and prepared, and it's going to cost money to do it. I mean, it costs staff time. Or you stop as soon as you reach the $100,000. So, how are you going to be working that one? Because my preference would be to just eliminate that at a cost not more than $100,000 in staff time because I think that that means that we're trying to put, I'm not sure what that does to the motion.
Vice Mayor Shepard, so it's a specific number, but I still look at it as a concept. And I'm not expecting we're supposed to be tracking and billing down to six-minute increments, but it's more designed to, right, to try to set some parameters. That said, I would just tell you that if we're in the middle of December and we're on a good track and we're approaching $100,000, then I would come back and tell the council that that's where we are. And, you know, and I don't think that would, I don't want the council just to be sort of plucking numbers out of the air every time we do a staff report going on, but I think there's, I think it's a good experiment and a certain kind of discipline for us. It's not that much difficulty for us to check back in and get more money if we needed to. I mean, get more staff time authorization, that's what it's really about. That's the way I look at it.
Okay, well, if you think you can work this and it's not going to impede what you're trying to do, then that's fine. I won't, but I do find things like this to be a little micro-management oriented, and I think that when we have to noodle through policy, especially new policy, it takes time. And we're either going to do it or we're not going to do it. So, I will be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, thank you, and thank you to those that worked on crafting the motion. So, you know, we've talked higher level here, and I think higher level, a couple of higher level comments here are appropriate, and that is, you know, we wouldn't have parking issues if we didn't have traffic issues. So, you know, how we quantify traffic, how we measure traffic, and how we analyze traffic trips as a part of development projects is really important. Not sure we've always been that successful about that. So, if the purpose of this exercise is to focus on growth, or if it's to focus on existing development, I think that needs to be clear when staff comes back. Because if it's on both, great. If it's on, well, I just think we need to be clear, let's just say, let's just pretend we can get a 30% success rate of TDM, but we don't have a handle on, you know, what our growth expectations are, which would be tied to, for one thing, the downtown development cap. We've still got 70% of that is still coming to town, whatever those developments are going to generate. So, that needs to be clear and straightforward when it comes back to us. As to the districts, one thing to be clear about here, too, is, is that an assessment like the parking assessment district? And I'm sure this will be clear when it comes back, but on whose backs are these assessments going to be? Are these fees going to be? You know, we have businesses downtown that have, and California Avenue, who've paid into assessment district over time and have not changed. They have the same business in those buildings. They haven't created any change that's impacted the need, so are we going to assess them again? So, you know, that's just something to keep in mind. Also, when we talk here in number two, B, it says outreach to various stakeholders, including but not limited to, and it says affected business interests. And I just want to make sure that that's intended to include business owners and not just property owners, because if there's an assessment district and the property owners get assessed, it's going to get passed through to the business owners. So, I'm getting a little bit clarity, if I could, here if business interest means property and business owners? Okay. The response to that was a yes. A nod doesn't record very well. So, thank you for that. Then, number three. Then number three, there was the invitation that was extended to add some things on to this. And I noted that Councilmember Berman mentioned use of technology in parking lots, but you didn't add it as, offer it as an amendment. So I think it doesn't hurt to make sort of a, sort of a laundry list here, just to kind of look at, you know, some of the things that might be included. I see a couple of shaking of heads over there, but this really is focused on TDM programs, but there are any number of other ways that we can address, address parking issues. The TD, the, excuse me, the technology issue that you mentioned, RPP, which if I look back at the motion that was passed previously, RPP was either included or it was intended to be included by Councilmember Klein, so RPP isn't included here. So I'm just kind of wondering why that wasn't, maybe I'll just ask Councilmember Klein, why that wasn't included when it was addressed in the prior motion?
Again, the reason, which I, the, the reason is we're trying to keep this at a high level, and the problem with laundry lists is what you leave out. And if you, we've already seen that by people taking some issue with the references to Contra Costa and Stanford, and that was because that was mentioned in the original colleague's memo. And it always creates a problem once you start your laundry list as to where it's going to end. This way, the staff under three is certainly free for us, for them to come back with any or all of those recommendations that you mentioned, or perhaps others, or not. And once you start making the laundry list, also, you have the problem of, are you confining what the staff is supposed to be doing? Whether you, whatever their budget is, which we're trying to limit so they can also get this done in a reasonable time, timeframe, we're only talking about 90 days here. The intent is to have a very focused, high-level report so that we can start making decisions to focus on particular things. If we have the staff try to develop an encyclopedia, we're going to be in a timeframe that you need to write an encyclopedia.
So my, I understand and appreciate the comments. I, I think that number three becomes kind of almost a moot point, then we may as well just say that this is about TDM. And the reason for that is because staff may come up with their own, and I'm sure they will come up with other, other ways to address traffic and parking problems, but if they don't hear from us, the things that we have on our minds, you know, staff isn't mind readers. So I look at, at kinds of lists and suggestions as included but not limited to, and so it's, you know, it's whatever staff comes up with. So RPP is one of those. Councilmember Berman's-
Councilmember Holman, I just want to point out, we do have the RPP coming before us on December 9th. It's on the tentative agenda now.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I meant to mention-
Is that the larger area though, or is that just the, the university north and south?
I believe that's the larger area discussion.
Okay, we'll see on that then. So, okay, certificates of occupancy is one way, too. We don't use certificates of occupancy as a trigger to address changed conditions. Many other communities do. Councilmember Price would probably know of that as well. One of the things that Penny Olson had sent to us was when we have this, this dialogue internally, to engage the transit authorities, makes perfect sense to me, to, to do that. There's also, at the, at the prior meeting when we discussed this, we included reference and referral to the Planning and Transportation Commission, that's not included here. So was that an oversight, or was that intentional? It was included previously?
On my part, it was intentional. It was, the idea was that they were going to come back in 90 days, and then we were going to figure out what we do, at which point it may then go to the Planning and Transportation Commission.
And Councilmember Klein?
But they won't be coming back 90 days if we're going to the Planning and Transportation Commission.
The, the timing is no different than it was previously. Okay, all right. So I'll just, I'll just put those things out there. So, you know, the, the technology at parking lots, the certificate occupancy as a trigger to analyze changed conditions and impacts, engage in the transit authority, consider whether this is, well, it sounds like that's going to happen anyway, about district, whether a district is citywide or not, so that's, that's good. Shared parking lots, which I bring up over and over again, that we seem to get nowhere with, and then shared permits, if there's been any advance, but that would be a question for the city attorney, if there's been any advance information about how we might better address that, given that we have constraints in the bond language. Okay.
Councilmember Price? You're done? All right. Seeing no further lights, if we could vote on the board? And Councilmember Price, you're voting no?
Yes.
Okay, and that passes on an eight to one vote, with Councilmember Price voting no. Okay? So I'm now going to adjourn this meeting, I understand that's the right, and then we're going to call roll for the next meeting.
Councilmember Berman?
Here.
Councilmember Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Klein? Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Price? Mayor Sharp?
Still here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shepard?
All right, and so before we go into closed session, we actually have a, a member of the public who wishes to speak. Is this on oral communications, or is this the issue at hand?
I'm, I'm not familiar with these issues, I'm just familiar with those issues as posted on the internet at 5:30, so I thought I was going to-
You can speak about anything in oral communications.
I'll go, just go ahead and do the oral communications.
Come on up.
My name is Bob Gable, and I'm familiar with the homeless situation around the Bay Area and at Coverley Center. And I've noted with interest the reports in the Daily Post and the Daily News regarding information that is public and which the council has addressed. And finally, there's been some sort of action. And the situation was out of control at the, and still kind of is, because there's lots of stuff and smoking going on. And so, once you have that, you have an unpleasant situation that could possibly result in a fire, and I understand there was a fire three years ago. And be that as it may, this council also is going to address whether to spend more money on the problem without any address to possible corruption at the InVision Opportunity Center. From the internet, I've gathered that Mr. Philip Daugh is still the senior director there. This is a bad situation, which will continue to cause controversy and possibly the surfacing of some illegal interests, because Mr. Daugh basically coddles or operates a gang there which attacks people by degree. And so the situation with somebody's homeless is going to reflect that. And this has been the case for years, as I spoke to this like some years ago, and of course, there was no action on it. Another interesting article in the Post was a Mr. J.J. Cap of the Alternatives Office came up and said, "Don't decriminal, don't criminalize homelessness." And when Mr. Cap and his colleagues all continue cases without merit, and this, while they try to course plea, and what this allows is the district attorneys and the cops to fail to take legitimate reports and then to fabricate evidence, suborn perjury, and abuse people in custody, and so nobody will report to the Palo Alto Police Department. And this is going to exacerbate, because you got a corruption bubble, and a derivative bubble, and a real estate bubble, and various other, an environmental bubble, and these are all liable to pop in the roaring 2020s. So I would minimize the controversy, the illegal interests, and bear in mind that there's going to be more homeless, and somebody's going to get them. And they won't all get the ship up to San Francisco. Thank you very much.
So I'm not sure what the procedure is, but I'm just going to put out there, Councilmember Price indicated on the last vote in the previous meeting that she meant to vote yes, and I just like the record to reflect that. So now we're going to go into a closed session on public employee performance evaluation for the city manager, so let's move into closed session.